For tonight for the Platte County zoning and planning. First of all, a few introductions. We have Bob Brockman, Jay Collins, Bonnie Lockhart, Bill Klein, Malcolm Irvin. We have Ian Jolovich, one of our commissioners tonight, myself, Marty Shepherd. With that, I don't, I think we can dispense with roll call. Everyone's here. Is there any conflicts of interest? Does anybody have a conflict of interest? Okay, we'll move right into new business. Proposed amendments to Chapter 13 Platte County zoning and planning regulations, which is the wind energy, alternative energy. We're just gonna start with on page one of the new document. And I will open it up to public comment at some point. And when I do open it up to public comment, please keep your comments to two minutes or less. And if in that timeframe I feel like we've heard enough, I'll ask you to sit down. We'll let someone else speak. So we're not here all night. Try and keep it under wraps. And like I say, we're all adults. We'll try and get through it. So with that, does the commission have any additions or anything on page one of the proposed document?
Of the proposed document?
Yes.
It's all the red and the blue.
Any, any questions on page one?
Not questions, but corrections. Some of the corrections they've made, I think, is stuff that we need to keep, like wind energy, where on the chapters that are changing wind energy siding facilities to WEX throughout the whole document.
I like that.
Yeah.
It just clarifies.
Yep.
Malcolm, are you documenting these changes as we go?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anything else on page one? That needs to be added to our current?
I think there were some questions about the statutes. Was that the right one?
No. That little phrase is not interesting.
Okay, that whole phrase, yeah.
So the way, the way I'm documenting it, Marty, in my mind is if there's anything that's in red or blue that you want to keep or, or adjust, I'll document it. Otherwise, it stands as is, are as is. So if there's anything in here you wanna keep or, or edit, then let me know. Does that make sense?
Yep, and I think that's what Bonnie was saying. Wind energy conversion systems, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And then like I said throughout the document.
Everything else is good.
Oh, it's very concerned, but I think the rest of the red should be out of there.
Okay.
But, I mean, I think that's what we came up with. And everything that's there that struck out, that's it.
Yep.
And there's our current.
I need some, I need some input from the other board members. If there is any.
Not at this time.
Okay, we're gonna move on to page. Malcolm, you good?
I'm good.
Moving on to page two.
One thing on that page, changes the statutes eighteen five two oh one through eighteen five two oh eight. And then eighteen five five oh one through eighteen five five fifteen.
And that's on, you're looking at A and B?
A and B under forty.
Okay.
And then also Title Nine, on the B.
Right.
Nine eighty three oh one through nine eighty three oh two.
Right. We're gonna add their corrections, right? Okay.
Just one thing that's wrong.
Malcolm, did you get that?
Mm-hmm.
Page three.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I add something on page two? Just put a fuller head on. It would be nice to have that anemometer definition, just because it does come up from time to time in permitting. It'd be nice to have a definition.
What about the one that you used to add, Marty? The ADLS?
Yeah, and that one, the only way, the only reason I was saying anemometer for me was because I've seen it when I was planner being permitted. The ADLS, I think, is a question for them. I'm not as familiar with this because I'm just in the documenting role.
Who knows what that is?
I would say that's gonna come from the FAA, not us.
That's just a definition. It's easier for me with the term.
Yep.
Yeah. Can we add that?
You got it, huh? I mean, they say it, they use it all the time.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Yeah, leave it in. Hey, you're leaving all the blue.
Yeah. Yeah, so whatever is existing, unless you say otherwise, stays in the document.
Good.
Are you working through the original? Or the?
We're working through their proposed changes.
Which is the original?
And with?
Kind of, but we didn't have that clause in ours, meaning G on, foreign adversaries.
The?
It was kinda?
That's one I think we're gonna strike.
Right.
Yeah, but, yeah, it's not Marcus Blue or Red though, yeah.
That was a, a black one?
It, it wasn't black, but it was not in our current regs. But, yeah, I've got that in the notes.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to page three.
I guess I'm okay with the definition of industrial siding council, non-commercial WEX, Eric Company. I don't know about the licensed microwave surgeon, worst case.
Which one?
The one that's in between industrial siding and non-commercial WEX.
Oh, licensed microwave surge?
Because we're, we're not gonna be having that in our regulations. That's why I think that we need to have it. It was added because it was part of what they proposed, but it's, we're, I'm striking that off of it.
Any other comment? Any other board members?
I'm good with that.
And I don't know about, you know, the planner and the planning commissioner, if they think that those are defined earlier in our regulations somewhere.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, that is.
I don't have the notes here. That was the, 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 the name.
Anything else on three? Anything?
How do you think that our original looks on that?
I should certainly send on that last thing.
The only thing that would be, would be the, maybe thing that, and then A. It was unfortunate to locate the right construction. Reconstruct? And, it seems like we talked about the reconstruct. I don't know.
My notes say, Jay had asked the question, what does this include? Mike Kelly had answered repowers or updates.
That's what they call it when they rebuild a urban, they re, they repower.
Okay. I mean, I think it's okay to have it.
Yeah, I like that in there, yep. Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
And then that was the other. In Platte County and Platte County Commissioners, that needs to be, there was a spelling error of the substation.
Did you get that, Malcolm?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Our original was okay on that one.
Okay. Jay?
Love?
I did have a note, Marty, that?
Which one?
On line twenty-one, you guys had talked about the fee of seven hundred and fifty, and you felt like that was low, but you had left it up in your, what would be appropriate?
I started that, but I didn't know why I started, so I didn't have to comment.
Where?
On penalties B. Any comment, any change?
I, I know that's what the state statute said, but it was not, I don't know.
Seven fifty.
Yeah, I'm, I'm asking your opinion, leave it or take it.
Are you guys gonna correct the, the wording where it says seven hundred ten thousand dollars?
Yeah, we need to correct that wording. Are you gonna leave it?
Hundred ten thousand, yeah, I get it.
Per term.
Per term, yeah.
See, on our, in the original regulations, that it doesn't read seven hundred ten thousand. This is seven hundred ten thousand.
Yep, you're right.
That was just something.
So it's just a type error on the new revision.
On the revision.
Yep. Okay, so we're leaving that alone?
As far as penalties part, I think so.
Okay.
And I don't think we need H on that.
Say that again, H?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't need it.
I don't think.
And then just some, uh?
No, I don't think that would be necessary.
The bottom line?
At the applicant's expense.
Yeah.
And then may, stay may.
Yeah. Stay may.
Well, I think so, because it's gonna be of the discretion of the county commissioners. If they don't, I don't know what we're doing. So, I don't think it has to stay.
Okay.
Personally?
Yep. You got that, Malcolm?
I think that, um, what was?
We'll, we'll leave that in.
Yeah, we brought in.
The ones that come out.
Nothing other than this right.
Yeah.
Sorry, where are you?
Bottom of page five.
Okay, I can't, all right. Thank you. It's hard for us to hear everything you're saying, actually.
Yeah.
We should look up. Thank you, you just need to tell us.
Yeah.
So that, on line thirty-three, you are or are not keeping F against the defense.
Leaving it just as it is.
Okay.
In our current, correct?
Um, five?
On line thirty-three.
Just leave that, leave our current first.
Okay. We're gonna move to page six. First thing to talk, they wanted to scratch, and agriculture classification districts, I think it needs to stay. And then on our current regulations, I have it down.
So this was the page that G is not in our current regs and should not be put in our current regs.
Yep, I have two question marks, it's on page. Yep. Got that, Malcolm?
And I crossed out, on line eighteen, the Platte County Health Department, because the Platte County Health Department doesn't do that.
Okay. I think he's, if I'm understanding what Malcolm's doing, any, unless we specify otherwise, the red's out, correct?
Correct.
Malcolm?
Right. I think the signage deal was, wanted to add that in.
I know we talked about it quite a bit, yeah. I'm not sure what we came up with, because I didn't think.
I put okay.
But I didn't, I didn't cross it out either, so.
Yeah, I think we was gonna leave it in.
I don't know about that.
Ours pretty well, ours pretty well say the same thing. It just says there shall be no signage or logo of any type allowed on the WEX facility structure.
I'm okay with our current. That just clarifies, I guess, a little bit, if you wanted to leave it. Needs to be. And as far as on F, also, I don't believe that that's.
Which one?
Or on F, on the N E C.
I have no, you talked about that before.
Good.
So that F should stay.
My note says you were not taking that because it says that already on page seven in that current regs.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to page seven.
What did you say?
Say about signage, we're gonna leave that or?
I thought, yeah. Let's go back, we're good.
I'm all right.
Jay, Bob? Signage?
They're pretty deep, right?
Yeah, you are.
We're the thinkers.
So, so add the red in or?
No.
Leave it the way it is.
On the, on the signage, I guess we'll keep that, keep, yeah. Leave it, leave it as proposed on there. It's why, yeah, that's anyways.
Page seven?
I think we need to leave the setbacks the way they are. I'm in agreement with Bill on that. Almost any permit that comes through here, the commissioners can put conditions on. So, you know, they wanna increase that distance, they can. But I think a quarter mile, like Bob said, a quarter mile takes a hundred and sixty acres.
In a section.
Out of the section. And our other regs on other stuff, gravel pits and other industries are all at a quarter of a mile. So to keep consistent throughout the regs, I think that's where we need to stay. That's my thinking.
What do you, what do you like, I like the?
And the five and a half times.
I do.
And that?
Yeah, yeah, as far as just like keeping it the way it is.
Okay, I'm gonna, oh, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Just on the quarter mile issue, bringing up gravel pits and such does not seem applicable because these things are six hundred feet tall, the tips of some of their, like, the latest ones coming out are six hundred feet tall tips. So, and the, the fall ranges, you know, where it would fall, et cetera, et cetera, and the impact on is much bigger than anything like a, a gravel pit or asphalt.
But that's where the five and a half comes in.
Can we, can we simplify that and just do a straight five and a half times the tower height from the property line? I'm just asking. That gives, I mean, you're talking almost, you're over a half a mile at that point to the current design of the towers in which they're trying to build. You're twenty-seven hundred and forty, fifty feet. You're, I, I think this, in my opinion, we're given, we're giving in on our quarter mile, and we're, we're making it, you know, if they make a thousand foot winter, I don't know what the, eventually they'll be, but if it's five and a half times that number, or if they're three hundred, that distance become less. You have a question?
I just wanted to put.
No, hang on, hang on, you didn't have your hand up.
Sorry. I was just, so if I can get clarification on the last statement that you were proposing, because the, the difference between A and C, one is a setback from somebody's dwelling, and the other is from the property line. So that means that if, if they build a quarter mile from my house, but it's close to my property line, that means I can't build something on my property that's closer than a quarter mile, because now it's too close to their winter. So I would just encourage you guys to make it from the property line so that the property owner, the adjacent property owner is protected.
I'm, I'm gonna ask, I don't know if we have anybody here from next territory, do we?
I'm betting not.
I just have a question. Do you have like a proposed site plan? What, what, I'll just be direct. How close is the closest wind tower to a hab, inhabited structure? I'm not asking, I'm asking these folks in the back.
From their application.
I'm on the environmental, see, that's, that's out of my purview, do you know? I mean, we can look it up.
We could provide that information.
And do you have an answer?
She has.
I do, it's from their application.
And what's the closest house?
Quite close. Could I just bring you the paper and show you? I don't, I can't, it's a, it's this big. Can I just show it to you? I actually was pretending to keep you guys.
Is it this one? Catherine, do you happen to know what page it's on their application?
It's an actual question. On my computer, I do.
That has the spots.
Can I just, I brought these to give them anyway. Do you wanna do that?
Jeremy?
Uh, just, just for a point of clarification or just info, that's six point three two, point six three two miles away, if it's a six hundred foot tower. That's five point five.
So it's not quite three quarters of a mile?
Not quite.
But it's, it's given, it's given the landowner better than a quarter mile.
Yeah.
And chances are, I'm not saying it's every case, chances are your house isn't right on the property line, most of the time. Not saying in every case, but most of the time.
Before, before you know how to copy. That's a spot.
These are the.
So the, uh?
It must be the.
Should be a residential.
Pardon?
So each of the highlighted dots is a structure?
Yeah, well, no, yeah, it's a structure, a home, a residence, and the number is the people living there.
Yeah. Yeah. You have another question, Marty?
What's that?
Where's the tower center? Are they the, these? I think they're the dead ends.
Yeah, the little gray dots.
So they're quite a ways away. Well, it's hard to tell on this map, but I'm gonna guess.
I think it's a second.
Yeah. Yep. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I, I wanna make sure that we're clear on tower height versus tip height of rotor. I think that the, it should be regarding the tip height of rotor, not to the tower height, which is the center of the nacelle.
I think we have that in the definition.
Yeah.
The definition says that the tower height is the distance from the highest point of a vertical rotor blade.
Okay. So that is, so that is the.
To the top surface of the WEX foundation.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure a little clearer.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just concerned about that as well.
I was just waiting for him to go again. So the, the setback amount, is that subject to change with the public's comment at the, at the hearing, for the public hearing?
Sure it is. All, all we're doing is going through it, and we're gonna make recommendations to the commissioners. That's it.
For, for our general applications.
Right.
That would, that would apply to anybody that would wanna apply for a WEX or a SOW or anything. And then at their discretion, at ours also, I guess, at the public hearing, we can make changes to a particular application if needed, make recommendations to the commissioners on that, if we feel like the setback should be further.
That's why I have to make two different publications. So I make a publication for planning and zoning, and then you, you all take public comment and then finalize. So you, what you're considering is not final, you can always change it.
Correct.
Then I make a publication with those changes you're formally recommending. And so they certainly can be changed at either their public hearing or the commissioners' public hearing.
Or, or the public hearing, yeah.
Yeah.
Of, of a particular applicant.
We can make it conditional.
For a particular applicant.
Right.
Yes.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Yes.
Is there a way for you guys as a, as a board to, to ask other counties that have, that have set it at a mile or greater for safety of the public? Is there a way to ask for you guys to talk with them and ask them why they did that? Cause?
I wouldn't know why there wouldn't be a way. Pick up the phone and call them.
But would you be willing to do that? Because I've implored you to make it a mile, and you guys don't seem to care about that.
I think we do care about it, honestly. I've had a lot of time just sitting in that core jumper. Three quarters of a mile's a long way away. In either direction from the center of any point takes up a lot of land, a lot.
I'm thinking of the safety, I'm not thinking of the land.
I don't think we're not thinking of the safety. You may think that. I think we're thinking on what's best for the majority of the county. Cause these might come in another area, not just your area.
I know, but it's my kids that are gonna be up there.
I understand. And I want you to, to know that I, I can speak for the entire board. None of us came here tonight to create enemies, none of us. And we're nothing but a volunteer. We're trying to go through it in a civil manner and come to some form of a good decision. I promise you, the la, I, I, it's weighed on my mind since the last meeting. I don't like making enemies. That's not my intent when I wake up in the morning. My intent is to look out for the greater good of the entire county, not your neighborhood. It's the entire county. And I'm not, I'm not picking on you, I'm just, just making a statement. It's our job to look out for the entire county. Let's move on.
Another question.
How, how, how is it good for the whole county? I guess, I don't understand that statement. Because there's people that do benefit from it.
Yeah, there's people that benefit, just like the people that may be impacted by Let's talk about these setbacks and get something figured out.
Okay. So if we go five and a half from, from the property line, then, then you're going beyond that quarter mile.
Absolutely.
Or like I said, you're going to the half a mile, but then should it be that from the property line and from the structure? And? I mean, are you talking about, what, the changes across the board, five and a half?
I'm trying to simplify it.
Yes, you know, I know.
And give the landowners, it's not what you want, but I'm trying to give them, trying to make some middle ground here. Three miles is excessive.
Well, it looks to me like they just want a mile or whatever, and I think the way it was set up before is to take in consideration that the tower might be. I think the way it was set up before is to take in consideration that the tower might be five hundred feet or it might be three hundred feet. And that's why the, the five and a half came into, and that's why the first statement, in my mind, is, is there is at least a quarter of a mile.
Right.
So if the tower's only a hundred feet, it's still gotta be a quarter of a mile from.
We, we still have to have something.
Okay.
A minimum.
I'm, I'm agreeing. I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page when we recommend these, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the way I read it anyways.
Okay.
And that's why they split it up like they did it, if I understand.
So you're proposing, I got it, just like it reads in A, the way we had it. Then we're gonna go to B. And you're gonna strike the red and leave the five and a half times. Is that what you're thinking?
And that would be from transmission and from communication, yes.
Yes, anybody, anybody else?
That's what I'm thinking. So you're leaving, you're leaving the one quarter from residence? It has to be.
At least.
At least one quarter. Which means that if the tower is shorter.
So you have a tower that's only two hundred feet.
Right. Or, or, yeah, I don't even know what the shortest tower would be, but.
Shortest tower. Two forty would be a, would be a quarter mile. At five and a half times.
The quantity continues.
So it's a pretty short tower.
Yeah.
Which are short towers.
So it's a pretty short tower. So it has to be at least a quarter mile.
So any tower less than two hundred and forty feet tall would be, it would be thirteen hundred and twenty feet away.
Right.
And then, anything taller than two hundred and forty would be.
Just do the math, exponential, right.
Five and a half times the tower height. So if these are proposed to be roughly five hundred feet towers, then, then it's gonna be a half a mile away.
Over.
Over a half a mile, twenty seven hundred and fifty feet away from, from any residential building or occupied structure.
Jay? Jay, Bob?
I'm good with the way it is.
Yeah, and the five point five, that's third-party transmission lines, communication. And one point one is from property line continuous to the structure. I think we need to leave it the way it is.
Marty? Sir?
Yes.
So, I think the biggest concern would be on C for the property owners if the tower, if their residence is further from the property line, and they build a tower closer, one point one times the height, close to their property. That restricts what they, the property owner, can do on their property now close to the tower. Would it be possible to add the quarter mile or five point five times the height to the property line?
I.
These regs preclude a landowner from, from building something on their own property after the, the wind facility is constructed?
No. You know.
They, they would, if they wanted to, that's, that's a risk, they would assume.
Correct.
If they wanted to build a building in an unsafe location, that's the question.
Exactly.
Right.
Exactly.
I, I might have a solution in the, under the solar. On page one oh three, it talks about, um, a, a renewable energy easement or a solar energy easement. It's, um, it's on page one oh four. And that easement is, is designed to allow the, the developer to enter into an agreement to prevent shading on their solar panels. So it will prevent the neighboring landlord from building.
What document are you on?
So what you're looking at.
In, in, in your original.
Yeah.
I love that page.
So what you're looking at is the, um, is just the wind energy portion, so on your screen it shows the page of Mike's.
And so, so what it does is it, it gives, it protects, it, it's designed to protect the developer so that they can enter into an easement with the neighboring property to prevent their solar panels from being shaded by either vegetation or any structures that a neighbor would put on that. So uh, by, by the existing regulations, they, uh, can enter into an agreement with the neighbor and negotiate an easement that's, uh, good for both parties. Uh, why couldn't you do the same thing with a wind tower? Because essentially what's happening is the wind tower, in this case, is shading the available use of a non-participating landowner's property. So if it cuts one direction to protect, um, one party, why doesn't it apply the opposite direction? So if they, if they can enter into a lease agreement or a, an easement uh, with a neighboring non-participant, uh, then that's great. At least the neighbor is compensated. If not, then set it back the full five and a half times the diameter to protect the neighboring property's rights. That way it's, it's, um, equitable for both parties. And it's already, the precedent's already established in the regulations.
They have that in there already.
Well, in the solar, but not in the winds.
In the wind also, it says unless waived by.
Yeah. But there's no requirement for an easement.
That's what that looks like, a waiver. That's what it is, so. Waiver is, is basically the same, you're, you're free to do whatever you'd like. You know, if they wanna put it right on your property line, they would have to, you'd have a waiver, which probably looks like an easement. Because an easement is the legal document that, that.
But the way it's written, there's no requirement for a waiver.
It's just required that they set back.
Yeah, one and a half, one point one times the height of the tower, which then infringes, it encroaches on the neighbor's property.
It encroaches on the. So Marty, can I, can I suggest something?
Yep.
So the question really is, from a property line where there's no structure, how far away should the wind tower be? Brandon's point was, have that consistency, one quarter mile at a minimum, or five point five, whichever one's greater. Is that what you think it should be away from a vacant property line, where nothing is there except maybe a fence? If that?
This Jews have so much country.
Because if that's, if you had said yes to that, I was gonna suggest A, B, and C could realistically just be one section that would say a minimum of one quarter mile, up to five point five.
That's what I was, that's what I was getting at.
And then the very last sentence.
That's what I said when I'm simplifying, that's what I.
And then the very last sentence would be.
I was wondering if that's what you meant. The measure's a lot. As far as.
So the last sentence would be, the affected landowner or utility enter a written waiver, or issue a written waiver, to Mike's point, to make sure it's written. Whether it's an easement, whether it's a lease. I don't know, between them, but. But I think Mike's point is, what's missing is written, in that sentence currently.
Doesn't count. Well, I'm listening.
Well, if you look at this on both sides of the fence, you're restricting this side of the wind tower. Get a quarter mile from your property. It's just like on pound, they have setbacks. So then are we gonna say that somebody over this side of the property line can't build a house within a quarter mile of your property line? Because if you don't do that, then you're favoring this guy over here. Cause this house might affect this, this, just as much.
I think you should ask that question too.
So I guess my thinking on this whole deal is if you're gonna restrict the, the people that are renting this land for wind development to stay at least a quarter of a mile away from the property line, are you folks willing to stay at least a quarter of a mile away from your property line with whatever you do? Because in that case, I mean, if, if you can build right on your property line, but yet
they can't.
the next guy can't.
I think what Bill's saying is, is your house that you build may ruin your neighbor's view shit if it's within a quarter mile. What's the difference between a house and a wind turbine?
Industrial siding.
Four hundred and fifty feet.
I, I have.
Well, yeah, but that's.
Use.
I mean, like I say, you guys are, are looking at these wind turbines as being bad things.
No.
And, yeah, yeah, you are, otherwise it's, it's not, I mean, it depends on what side of the fence you're on. If you're leasing your land to a wind turbine, you think they're the greatest thing in the world. Cause I'll bet you I can find just as many people out there in that, that area of the community that are behind the wind turbine.
You cannot.
Well, then they wouldn't be trying to lease all this land from them if there wasn't for it.
There are only a few of them.
May I comment too?
Yeah, but it's, at some point, we need to get through this document. And we're not gonna get through it if we keep fielding twenty thousand questions.
In, in response to your question, I can get insurance to cover my property and my, my health if my neighbor does, if, if their house catches on fire and it catches my house on fire. We spoke at the last meeting that we can't give insurance liability protection. And I know you, you all said, well, then you have to take them to court. But that's not a reasonable solution when everybody has to have car insurance to drive a car. So I'm just saying, we can't build a house.
What you're saying, you can't get insurance for.
Because if I build a house next to the property line, I wouldn't be able to insure it if it's in the, in danger of.
Because of what the regulations say, I mean?
Because, well, because of the proximity to the wind turbine.
Your, your insurance company won't cover you because you're building that close to a wind turbine?
They're telling people that they won't cover damage caused by a wind power catastrophe.
If you're within a certain distance of a tower?
Yeah, you gotta expand on that.
That specific.
You don't know.
That I don't know. If, they, they didn't get to that detail. So that's the concern, is that means that I can't, I couldn't build on my property if it's within a certain enough distance to the wind turbine because we can't get protection, liability protection, homeowner's insurance. It just restricts the use of.
I have no idea. I don't either, but I'm just looking at it as, I might be the landowner that wants one. And if, if you're telling me that I have to stay at least a quarter of a mile away, why can't I tell you that you have to keep your house a quarter mile away from my property? Because I don't want your house next to me.
Well, my house isn't six hundred feet tall.
It doesn't matter. It's still an obstacle that I don't wanna see.
Yeah, that's, that's the problem.
This, this county has always been rights of the landowner to do what they want to as long as it doesn't damage anybody.
Comparing a house to a wind turbine is apples to oranges.
In your mind.
In your eyes.
Where does this go?
It is.
Huh?
What's next? What's next?
That's what, that's, that's.
That's what I'm asking.
What's, what's next?
Are they gonna come out and tell me that I can't build my feedlot a mile and a half away from my property line?
You already have restrictions for those.
There is. And that's what I'm saying, is it needs to be equal on both sides of the fence.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if you can tell me what I can do, then I should be able to tell you what you can do. And I don't see that happening in any of this stuff. I mean, we're all trying to control what they do. And whether it's good or bad, I mean, yes, if it's gonna hurt a bunch of people, then I understand, but I, I see them built all over the country and I'm not sure our regulations don't cover a lot of the issues.
Man, I was gonna address that real quick. I think ethically, when you're trying to decide between two parties and, and it's, you know, you have to decide, you have to give more, um, understanding to the party that has no choice in the matter. And that would be the landowner that is adjacent, that it doesn't have the lease. They can't pick up their, you know, I mean, they, they can't move away because their property value tanks. So it's really the person who's making the choice, the positive choice, to put, uh, an industrial um, application on their property in an agricultural area. And that's the whole reason it's a special use, right? Special use permit because it's not normal. And you have to give, I think ethically, you have to give special consideration to the person who doesn't have a choice in the matter.
Ma'am?
Yes, and then we're gonna, we're gonna proceed off. Go ahead.
I think that I think I could speak for almost everyone that would have adjacent property rights saying that you can control the height of my house, it's my property line, if I can control the height of your tower. If there were equal protections.
Thank you. Where we at? Let's make a decision. Hang on, Lucendo. Okay, and you're it. Go.
Okay, I liked what, kinda what Mark, what Malcolm was saying. I mean, it seems to be that transmission lines seem to be more important than people's residences in a way. Or at least structures. And, and the I mean, at least, the way you had it the first time, the power lines were five point five times the WEX tower height, correct? Okay, so what happens at C? It goes down to one point one.
One point one.
Couldn't, I think Malcolm said, couldn't you just do them all the same? At least, at least, minimum? Five point five times the tower height.
Honestly, that's what I was thinking when I made the comment, if we simplify that would, that would get over the half mile threshold. But now, I can't just ask you folks questions. I'm gonna ask next territory question. It's only fair. Yeah, it is. What, what do, what does five point five do? Do you have heartburn with five point fives?
You know, I think that, um, all of these standards are based off of state statutes um, that have delineated between these different items. Counties across Wyoming have various standards. I think that Pott County in its current setbacks are already more stringent than most counties. In most counties they are.
No.
No.
Nope.
You're wrong.
First, so the minimum state standards right now.
Okay, let's, let's figure it out.
Set my pace.
I think if we're gonna incorporate all of it, like you said, if you wanna do, I think that it should be a quarter mile, at least a quarter mile or five point five.
So what did you just say, Marty?
I just said, if we're gonna, if, if we're gonna incorporate all of this together into just one, one setback for
Anything and everything?
For property lines, for structures, for, for transmission lines. Quarter mile at least, five point five times the tower height, or at least a quarter mile. That's basically what they all say anyway, except for C.
If you, if you don't like the five and a half, do three and a half, four and a half, give them.
Well, but then I think in some ways that doesn't, that's not protective enough for like A. I think A should be the quarter mile. I think A should be a quarter mile, or five point five. And I don't know, I guess I'm confused about what the difference between C and D is. I mean, I get it that there's a project structure, and what's the property, what is a property line structure? And D, what is, what is that? C says property, C says all Wex project structures shall be set back. And D says all Wex project property line structures shall be set back. What is the difference?
Doesn't this right here say the same thing as this one, the difference in the amount? Closest to residence or dwelling is five point five. And then down here, it talks about structure setbacks should be at least one point one. Minimum tower height. So doesn't it, to me, C doesn't even need to be in it. Because I think it's covered in A. Unless this is not the original.
Yeah, it does, it says that.
Says the exact same thing. I'm not sure why C is in there, because it talks about it in A. I'm not seeing it now. These section setbacks, B.
So C is, and I am just in the area, but I have no idea if any of these folks have leases or not. So where there's no structure anywhere in here, it's saying that the wind tower is one point one times its height away from this line.
If there's no buildings or anything.
But if there's a building right there, then it would have to be
Five point five.
At least a quarter mile, up to five point five, depending on height. So that's why there's that difference.
Okay, that makes sense, and that's...
So that's the difference between C and D?
No, C and A. Where it talks about in A.
D is from a, so...
It's like it's crossed out in here.
Yeah.
This is if there's a structure there. And this down here is talking about if there isn't a structure.
So A is a structure on a corner of a pivot. B is from a transmission line, C is from no building, no structure. D is, you have to be at least a quarter mile, up to five point five times away from the Chute Creek Estates, for instance. It's a planted residential something.
Did we have this trouble about defining a structure? This kinda came up one of our prior permitting deals, the definition of the structure. Remember that? It can be about anything.
That was the transmission line.
Yep. Yep. I'm not trying to ignore you, Tom, I'm just trying to make some sense of how we're gonna get through this.
Yeah, just that one point one, that, that doesn't, we know for a fact it happened down at the Duke Energy Site with the Suzan turbines, which are smaller turbines than the ones proposed here. They were set at the one point one times the height from a highway, Happy Jack Road. And they threw a hundred and forty pound chunks of ice out there. I've got that right from a wind turbine tech that started that thing up. So if you cite any of them at one point one times from a property line, you're saying that it's okay for a neighbor to throw chunks of ice on your property.
Do you know when that happened?
Boy, it's probably fifteen years or so ago.
So let's just, maybe can we address that issue, the one point one?
So we leave everything else the same, and just address this C?
I think they bring up a good point when
I do, too.
When they, when they talk about the transmission line being five point five times, but yet the existing tower is not. I think that's a very valid point. To me, the turbine is way worse than the transmission line. Just giving you my honest opinion. So I...
I think there are a lot of dangers with the transmission line also.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying probably one supersedes the other one, but I...
I think that C should be greater than what it is.
Okay.
I don't know, but I don't know about changing, I don't know about changing it to five and a half.
That's, that was my question, that's a lot.
It's a half mile.
So give them a half mile.
It's a half, five and a half is a half mile, so one section is completely eaten up. If you have one section, you're overlapping setbacks. Yeah, but one point one, I agree with you, it's not enough.
That's five hundred and fifty feet of all setbacks, so
Yeah.
if a quarter of a mile...
Quarter mile?
Twice that.
What's that, thirteen hundred feet?
So if you went three times five hundred, I'm just using five hundred, that's fifteen hundred. See, that three is a little, maybe a little too...
Well, I think it should be addressed, though.
So you wanna just change it to a quarter of a mile?
Quarter mile, or three times.
Yeah, I think it's better.
What do you all think?
Quarter?
Quarter mile, at least quarter mile, or three times.
I'd go for a minimum quarter mile. If the power's bigger, go to three.
Oh, it's worse.
Well, you got it.
Or so put at least three times the maximum like tower height?
That's more than a quarter of a mile.
Not much. Couple hundred feet more. Is that really on the downer surface?
Six hundred foot tower.
So that's five hundred feet more, than a quarter mile. Not quite. Is that that great, for that pretty of a tower? I don't know.
But I don't think one point one's sufficient.
Two and a half times, or three? That's my, that's what I think. I would say at least two and a half times.
I see three.
I say three. Bob? Time for you to weigh in.
So we're at a quarter and three times, and then he's right?
Well, the way that this particular one makes it would just be how many times the tower height? Two and a half times the tower height, three times the tower height? Or one point one?
Three and two and a half.
Two and three, and two and a half, one or the other?
Oh, I'm sorry, a quarter and two and a half.
Two and a half.
Quarter's thirteen twenty, three's fifteen hundred. Two sixteen difference.
Not wrong, but...
Maybe it could be a lot of spread room.
Well, that's what they're sitting out there, they're waiting for us to make the decision.
I'd say three.
Three times.
I can go with three.
On C, I think that's just three times.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Bob?
Probably with it.
Bill, I know you're not, but that's how words work sometimes. You're the short straw.
I'm just wanting to make sure we're not duplicating what we are saying.
No, we're not, we're not. We're just, we're just basically, all of that whole section is gonna stay the same, except for C.
With your permission, I'd like to take a whack at just cleaning it up, so it's a little bit more clear. And essentially saying, oh, there should be a quarter mile from pretty much anything. And up to five, ten point five for these, up to three for these. And then a section that would just say, any of these can be waived by the affected landlord or property owner.
Sure, I'm okay with that.
Can I make it maybe a change?
Well, you're the chairman.
Why couldn't, to simplify, and I'm not trying to make it better, I'm trying to simplify it. Why would a transmission line be set five point five and the wind turbine be three? Why wouldn't we just give it?
Marty, that's saying that the wind tower has to be five point five times away from a transmission line. Not that the transmission line has to be five point five times away from anything. Just saying the tower has to be...
Okay, I read that wrong. Thank you. I got it, okay.
But if it said what you thought it did, you were right.
I got it. Thank you. All right. Marty, real quick, could I just have a clarifier?
Sure.
So you're saying three times from property line and five five from dwelling? Is that what you guys decided, haven't touched the dwelling yet? I just was wanting to clarify.
The dwelling is in A, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Five five, five point, at least a quarter mile is greater than?
Yes.
So in other words, if it's a five hundred foot tall tower at five point five, you're not, they wouldn't be able to set it at a quarter, it would be at that.
It would be at five.
Basically, be twenty seven fifty.
Shall it be located closer?
Sounds great, thank you, guys.
See, that's why I keep coming back, I think C is just duplicate.
The language is complicated.
I'll do my best to clean it up and make it.
Okay, that's your task, Mel.
I'll try to clear the mud out of the water.
Let's move on.
Okay. I knew that was gonna be long.
We got another question.
You do?
Oh. My name's Tammy Martin, and I just asked my search engine on how far these wind turbines can throw ice. And it depends, but it looks like its potential is anywhere between sixteen hundred feet and almost three thousand feet. Is where it showed on the search engine.
Right.
Okay, we're moving on to page eight? This is all just, just what we just did, is it not?
It's not.
So E is from town.
So E is one mile, they wanna change it to three miles from any town to your town. F is from a public road right away. And State Parks is G.
I think our regulations are sufficient to weigh the rope.
I agree.
Once again, one mile's a long way. Okay, we're gonna go into H.
H changes for parent company owners' operators, I think is fine.
Yep, I do, too. Malcolm on H.
I'm opposed.
The practice one says, I think, I think I is fine the way that we have it.
In I, I'm just trying to think about flexibility for the planning and zoning condition and commissioners. If you have, the setback distances can only be modified from residential dwellings in subdivisions. Jay was hitting earlier that you can attach conditions if there's an area you don't like. I think this was painting into a corner a little bit. So you wanna leave, give yourselves more flexibility to attach conditions.
Jay?
So you think that on I, that our current rights are sufficient?
I think so.
Anything else on page J?
I had on number four, but that's okay with me.
Yeah, I do, too.
On I, four?
Yeah.
I mean, they made that decision anyway. I don't know if it's being there, but...
Four?
Rode number four?
Leaving it?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I think that you guys have a lot of faith in the next commissioners. Seriously, that goes a long ways.
Yeah, I'm not sure I like it.
That's, that's a big one. They already have it anyways, but...
Exactly.
I have, I have wrote down striking, that's what I have wrote down.
You have it wrote down to strike it?
Yep.
Or you have it written down to strike check K? Because those all...
Check K, yeah.
I don't like any of them, I feel. Scratch them?
Scratch them, yes.
On J, what are you doing on J?
J, J, last time, I think we decided that we did not need that right now.
Is that something we can, we have that here?
Absolutely. Anything, anything that you don't like, you can sure bring up again.
So the, on J, that's, that's not something that we would decide anyway. That's something that the company would decide how close they want their towers to be.
Right.
And I've done a lot of reading about that as well, and that's kind of a typical distance anyhow for them. Yeah. It, yeah, I don't know, it's up to, I don't see where we can really decide how far apart their tower should be, I guess.
Yeah.
That's where I'm at.
I agree. Personally. Page nine?
G on safety access on A, still?
No, I just...
We did strike that, I believe, right? Okay, and all of, most of mine?
Yep.
I think we already went over all that pretty much.
Thank you.
So we would be down to...
We talked about that, we did talk about anti-climbing device, though, twelve feet. We did.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
That needs, I think that should stay in there.
No, I think that's what we have.
So you're talking about...
Yeah, that is what we had, they just, they just wrote, wrote it out, twelve, as well as having just the number twelve.
You are, you are not accepting any of the changes above K?
No.
Okay.
Page ten, Mike?
Yep, page ten.
So you guys were okay leaving all that signage in there?
I wasn't.
Except for...
I didn't want the landowner's name.
So for the landowner's name?
Because you're not, I don't think it's our job to put somebody's personal phone number on
Right.
out there for public. I think the company's phone number is adequate.
But as far as the first paragraph, P in general?
I think we just talked about taking out four.
Taking out number four?
Yeah.
That's what I should also.
All of four?
Yes.
Taking out, no, just taking out landowner's name.
Yeah. You lied thirteen.
I did have a note on six and seven, it's about this de- place in the road right away? That if it's not a county right away, whether we can, whether we can require within wide out right away, essentially.
That makes sense. So you're saying scratch six?
That, I'm not saying anything, I'm just, that was a concern I had raised with.
This part where it says place the road right of way, that might not be legal in some.
What was your, can I ask what your intent was on that comment? What?
I don't know where you're at right now.
We're on page 11.
Page 10, line number six.
Gotcha. Oh, you're up in the paragraph. Is that what you're talking about?
Line six.
Yeah. I mean, is that just something that you took off of some other regulations?
Exactly, we borrowed it.
Okay.
And I, I guess at the road wideaway, so it can be easily seen in case there's a fire. I mean, if anybody happens to be driving by, I think it's just about safety stuff. All right.
And I'm wondering.
I mean, I think some of these things, if the tower's way out there, you know.
It would just have to be.
The sign should be closer to the road.
The road should be.
Right, is that what?
Well, if that's what they're hitting at, yes, but I'm not sure if that's, I don't know if that says what they really want.
I think it should be close to the road because that's where people who go up and down the road and say, hey, there's a tower on fire, geez, we need to call somebody.
What about, I'm just totally spitballing here, is that be placed at the entrance of the wax facility? Cause my thought, in the planner role, having worked with YDOT, it's on YouTube, but YDOT's a pain in the ass with the right of way. And so if we say you have to put a sign out there, YDOT says, no, we're not permitting it, then what? That's not our fault, that's not a developer's fault, that's YDOT. So that's why I raised that question.
Do some kind of acknowledgement on, like you said, like entrance to the facility.
So, so I'm gonna be the devil's advocate, so there's no winter, but out there, there's no sign, there's no nothing, and there's a fire. We're gonna go put it out. There's not a roadmap, there's not a road, they're gonna cut the fences, they're gonna do whatever they need to do to go put the fire out.
True.
Am I?
True.
You're wrong there.
I'm just talking about somebody driving by.
What's that?
You know, somebody happens to be driving by.
Well, they're gonna call 911 and say, hey, we're on Highway 313, there's a fire, X.
Excellent.
I mean, I.
Go for it.
Have you ever been around the wind turbine farms?
I, I have.
There's no, it's a maze. I think that's confused as hell. Because you sit on a counter looking at six of them, which one of the six?
And there's all kinds of internal roads.
Yeah.
Yep.
I don't know, I mean, for that aspect, but.
Well, that was my question about the internal road tour. You know, is there like one main road that's gonna go in and kind of several that go out from there? Or is it gonna be just one road to one tower?
It doesn't matter. They build them however they like.
Yes.
And so.
It's very sporadic, the one that I'm familiar with, it's wherever, the easiest way they can get to determine is where the road is.
Just a two-track.
And it actually, it actually makes the property more accessible because there's roads there that were never there before.
You got a question off the line.
Would it be appropriate as part of your regulations to insist that each of those service roads be designated with a number? Would it be appropriate to have part, as part of your regulations, that each of those service roads that the government puts in to service those towers have a designated number that goes into your emergency operations?
Make people have addresses in subdivisions?
They don't have them.
I know.
I know.
I, I know what you're saying.
The towers have some kind of identification on some numbers, something, right?
Yeah, similar to an oil or gas well.
Yeah. And are the roads identifiable going in? I mean, the ones like the gas fields that are going in. They don't have a company name, you know, this is an access road for this company to this pit or whatever. Is it similar in a wind farm?
I'm not familiar if there's like road naming conventions or not, like.
So, so just, and this is where you guys need to use these people. You normally add an entrance, any road that comes off of the main road is a sign that says, to come. From what I remember as I've toured these, is that correct?
I think generally, yes.
Generally. So as a whole, I don't think you can put it for everyone. I don't think that's feasible. But if any road that comes off the main road usually always has a sign that'll say next area, with the phone number. And decide that it is. And that's used by maintenance personnel, that's used by, because they need all that. Cause you can't just go, well, those ones over by that side, well, you can do it over that. So.
Right.
I think some of that's already built into the, the system, but I don't think there's anything wrong with saying that signage, appropriate signage needs to be posted on, on established roads or something.
In front of roads.
And further, you know, there is coordination with emergency management, that type of thing to ensure that folks know where the towers are, what the site plan, where things are located.
And what Jeremy described is consistent with what I've seen with renewable projects and oil and gas projects.
Clear your stance, scratch that.
Come on, the main road, public roads.
Well, or just to, yeah, just reworded. You know, to be placed at.
Entrance.
Yeah, to, to tower.
It would have to be off a county road, that's the only way, that's the only way you can make them do it. Cause when you choose to live off the grid, we, we add that too, those people don't want an address.
Right, no, we're not saying to add an address.
No, but I'm just saying, I think legally, I think the only way we can address this is off a county road. After that, it's up to the company.
Or, or the, yeah, I mean, if somebody was not willing to lay out their pasture somewhere.
Malcolm, you have that? Let's move on.
And then, obviously, I've gotta do a little bit of interpreting the gray area, right? And hearing what you're saying, and again, that's the purpose of the public hearing. Whatever I forward to from what I surmised in your conversation, it's not concrete, you can change it.
Right.
So if I didn't get what you're getting at.
Okay, let's move on to the noise, that was another issue.
Well, not quite, because we still have the inspection. Would you want to go back in? We, cause we struck the fluid containment already.
Yeah.
I have a question mark by the inspection on page nine, oh, sorry, page N.
Yeah, page 10.
I'm there.
Are you there? Are you, can you think about that? Not quite. I mean, I guess it's okay, it's, it's in the regs anyway, also, I think. Hasn't the county, did you go over that before?
I think you did.
I just have re-then, so.
Re-then.
Marty, where are we?
Page 10 still?
What was?
On I.
On I, inspect.
And what did you say about fluid?
Oh, the fluid containment, we are, that's going out, that's, we struck that at the last meeting.
Yep. So you can leave I in?
Sure.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
Could you give me the reason you took H out? I can't remember.
Well, we.
Like an oil spill.
Didn't they say they have containment in the tower?
That's what they said, yes, that they do have containment around.
Is that correct? There's containment within the tower.
Yes, that's correct.
It's controlled by the state.
And we have.
Yeah, and a state, a state.
And, and federal government, that's usual, but EPA, DEQ, something like that. We don't have a, we don't have a spill containment countermeasure department.
DEQ will take care of it.
So I'm okay, correct?
DEQ will, DEQ will take care of spills. They don't, they don't wanna drop anything, cause DEQ will take care of that.
DEQ and EPA.
We don't, we don't wanna be in that, we'll check out your oil and spill business.
It's kind of.
Let's go on to noise, let's go to the noise, let's move on.
The noises.
I think our regulations are good.
I think our regulations are fine with that.
We're never gonna get to zero, so.
D, we were gonna take out.
Yep, I have that gone.
Might I? Question?
Zero at one.
Might I suggest if you wanna keep yours when you say 50, all the way up to the property line, and then the property line, it has to be zero?
You what now, Jill? Say that again.
Okay, on A, let's just take A, you say 50 decibels is measured at the property line, but across the property line, it needs to be a zero on the neighboring property of the non-participating property.
I disagree. I mean, we can't stop the wind from blowing, I mean, noises travel, trains travel, I mean, how are we gonna control noise?
It's physics.
If, on a calm day, I'm not trying, Dari, on a calm day, that wind might be zero. When the wind's blowing 45, that wind might be.
I know.
45 decibels because the wind's moving it.
Right, we're talking decibels from the wind tower.
I understand.
So when it comes to the property line, the wind tower cannot have any excess noise on the property. Now, yes, they're gonna have noise over there because of wind and chickens and whatever. I'm talking about the wind tower.
No, I, I know what you're talking about.
Thank you.
I, I think that's gonna be really hard to get to zero.
It is.
So.
One.
Jeremy?
Hey, one thing I'd be careful of is we need to be careful, we don't set a precedence that could destroy everything. Cause one thing we need to be careful, if we set a precedence for this, I mean, I, I got a half a dozen kids, I got more than, I got a dozen kids shooting 22s every Sunday afternoon on my property for my YHEC program. And I could have a neighbor that say, well, I heard your 22 in my house and you can't do that. Or, or you're running your tractor in your field and we can't. So I just, I just, I, I understand the concern, but I think we need to be careful cause they can use these against us if we're not careful. Other industries and other people in other positions.
I, I look at the whole document that way.
Yes.
It's, it's not just the wind turbines that, we are talking about them, but it's affecting the whole county in a lot of different ways. I think our regulations are good.
Yeah, especially for our setbacks, the way they are, at a quarter mile, I think it's very not likely you're gonna hear them anyway.
Okay.
From what I've heard.
Move on, page 11.
Marty?
Yep.
I'm not suggesting that it be zero, but could it be between, you know, between 50 and zero, between 45 and zero? I have a very short quote, I was reading, can I just read it? It's, it's this, it's very short regarding decibels, okay. Annoyance, this is from an audiologist who spoke to the Kansas State Senate in 2022 about wind turbine noise. So he's a doctor audiologist by trade. Annoyance from turbine noise at 35 decibels corresponds to the annoyance reported for other common community noise sources at 45 decibels. The World Health Organization has concluded that observable effects of nighttime outdoor noise levels of 40 decibels or higher will lead to diminished health.
Better talk to the crickets.
What's that?
Better talk to the crickets.
The crickets don't do that.
Well, you don't hurt my crickets.
I have had, I have had crickets keep up at night, so. Yeah, barking dogs.
Barking dogs is 85?
Yeah.
80 to 90.
But continuous, I think is the difference there.
And I don't, I don't think.
They don't turn continuous.
Continuous.
But at nighttime, they could.
They, they could.
Anytime, really.
They could.
Max decibels over a 24-hour period at 70 could be considered, could be considered harmful according to three different governmental websites that I looked at.
So once again, I say ours are good.
Agreed.
Okay, move on.
It has to be the continuous 24-hour.
And I'm gonna say, oh, even at the bottom. That whole, well, where it's, they struck 60 in foots of air.
Oh, oh, wait.
We struck.
We struck.
Yeah.
D is out.
Yeah, D's out.
So basically, everything in our notices.
Stay the same. Page 11.
Ours are fine.
So E, F, and G are out?
Yep.
We stood.
Yeah.
Up until B.
So all of 12 is out? All of 12? Yep.
Well, I didn't, that was a visual.
Visual's the only that I had.
We have that over here on.
I think that's gonna be a tough one to find.
I mean, we, in the current, it's there. I guess personally, I'd be glad to hope we have this.
I think you're opening a can of worms if you leave it in there.
What?
Visual.
Well, we have it in the current laws.
I understand that.
Yes, on that, no, we don't want that.
Okay. This is clear, I'm just, I'm just clarifying.
What they, what they had added, I think that we had already struck and put that. But I don't, I didn't actually cross it out on my slide, no, for sure. No, I did. Sure, no? No.
Okay, page 13. Leave ours as red? Or leave ours as is, I shouldn't say red because that's.
I think B is a problem.
Which one?
B.
B?
I think that there's other regulatory regulations that say they have to be a certain color.
That's, I think that's in our existing, isn't it?
Well, yeah.
So.
Right, it is. I think that, I think that's not, I mean, it's not a thing. You guys, you guys can't choose between green or green, can't, you have to be either one of two shades of white.
The current pricks.
More or less.
Those two, Ian, say it to reasonable, to the extent.
Yeah.
Reasonably possible.
That's what I mean, I think they're regulated by the federal government that says you have to be this color or this shape, you know, maybe not the shape, but that, that color supersedes us.
Okay, so we need to take ours out. Everyone just take ours out too then?
B is unenforceable anyways, so.
I can understand that, that makes sense.
So B out too.
So what Ian's talking about is in the regs, as written. It says they have to be green or tan. So it's in your definitions.
I, I guess I'm okay with that.
Something like that, but I think that they're regulated by.
Says to the extent reasonably possible. So if they do have a choice, then they prefer them to.
Okay.
Yeah.
They don't want the pink out there or something, right?
Okay. Anything else on page 13?
What did you do with A? I didn't hear what you said about A.
We took it out. Anything else on 13?
Well, all of that is out.
That's what I'm asking, I'm just clarifying.
Because it's in.
Same way with page 14, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Same way with the top of page 15.
Sorry, could you go a little slower? Cause you just passed up fire protection.
Right, no, well, we didn't pass it, we passed what was proposed. Okay. We just, we just left our regulations the way that they are.
Okay.
One, one question, the, the on-off light designed for night flight with the FFA. You guys, did you leave that as may or shall?
Original?
Right there, line 17.
Uh, may.
So, just, and I'll just share, honest, in my opinion, don't have to take it, but that's something that I think we can tell them that we need that personally. Is one of the worst things at night is if you got a house, even if it's 5.5 times the distance from that tower, and those lights are blinking all night long, you want it to be a deal where they, they're gonna put that technology on there, which they should, but. I mean, you want those things to turn off at night. And now they make it where if a plane comes into that jurisdiction, yeah, am I correct in that statement?
Correct, the Industrial Safety Council, it's a standard permit condition.
Is it now? So it's already.
If it's throughed by the FAA.
Between, between that, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Jeremy.
And FAA, that's kind of out of our hands, so we can just see that how it is.
Malcolm, with, this goes back to the definitions of ADLS. So that, if you're leaving that in there, that might be a good place to, I mean, that's what it's called.
To leave ADLS reference. To leave ADLS reference it.
Yeah, to reference it in.
Partly so the aircraft systems would be ADLS.
Yes, that's what it's called.
But so let me understand, so the FAA, so industrial siding is saying if the FAA says you can shut off the lights, you will, if, but then if an airplane comes in that area, they'll turn on. So I'm thinking we would probably want to leave may. Because.
If it's regulated by the FAA. Is it regulated by the FAA?
That's correct. The FAA has to approve the ADLS system. It's a system that's installed on the turbines. And so then if there is not an aircraft nearby, the lights shut off. If there's an aircraft nearby, the lights have to turn on.
Reason.
May is. That's cool.
Higher.
Yep. If there's, if there's another organizer or an entity that says you have to, I just wanted to, personally, that's, at least at night, we don't have to look at them.
All of my STARS projects and the state has that system installed. Committed to doing it on their project.
Anything else on fifteen?
Not very yet, thirteen?
We were just talking about.
I thought eighteen was all out.
Yeah.
Fourteen was all out.
Yeah.
Quick question, Chairman.
You're fine.
On thirteen, where it says fire protection, all WEX projects shall have a defensible space for fire protection. How is that defined? How do you define that?
Well, in the, later in the regs here, it has a whole thing about working with the fire departments, having a plan in mind. I don't remember where it was at, what section.
B?
C.
Nineteen, maybe? Page nineteen.
Page nineteen, probably.
Uh, U. Yeah, it's line thirty-three, page nineteen. Coordinated with local fire department emergency management coordinators. So it's already in our current regulations.
Can you be more specific as to section number on that?
Um, it's on page nineteen, it's line thirty-three. U. Coordination with local fire department and emergency management coordinator.
So in our original regs, it's.
It's already in there.
And so, yeah. Says they must submit to the local fire department and our emergency management. A copy of the site plan. And then I believe that under the actual name, there's also.
We good then on that? Okay.
I just think that those things that we added gives it more specific.
Well, and then again, also, that's one of those things that the department will make their remarks, recommendations, whatever about it during the.
With your hearing.
During the application process. There's the game of fish and all these different departments. And I believe emergency management and one of those departments needs to be notified. And they may make recommendations to the board as well, or to the planner. And then he puts it in a packet to us.
Okay, so I'm on page fifteen. Got forty more to go. It's already eight-thirty.
There's a lot. So wait, fifteen is it?
Yeah. I'm good with leaving ours as they're red, or as they're, as we have now.
Uh, yes. The question mark, I was on D.
On which one?
Page fifteen.
Yeah.
B.
What was your question?
I don't know, I just have a question mark. If that was something.
Isn't that covered in C right above it?
Utility crossing permits from Platte County Road. Oh, it's to, to, um. Obtain utility crossing permits from Platte County Road. Where's the one about?
Just the why not?
So, oh, I don't know.
They're going to have to go to Roden Bridge anyway.
Yeah, that's kind of.
Correct, Ian? No matter what.
No matter what. So D and E are out?
Yeah. Page sixteen.
And F.
Yeah, F is out.
And I think that. I think the current regs, other than changing current company owners, operators, and the WEXs.
You're on I?
I'm on, I'm on that whole page.
Yeah, okay.
Nothing on that page should be changed, except for.
Parent company.
Parent company owners.
Okay. So this is out, okay. Page seventeen.
Just only, only our original.
Okay.
Same on eighteen. I have the last one on E.
I like where they added at the end on, on page eighteen, satisfaction to Platte County Weden Pest District. That way, it's not a, it's not a neighboring, busy neighbor complaint in, it's a third party.
They'd already said county, they just said the platform.
Okay, well.
So, yeah, it's fine.
Okay. Nineteen.
Can I, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
On seventeen, the road use agreement? I think there's been a question for Ian, whether we maintain it in there. I mean, the county can always require as a condition, but at least, and I think shall make may.
I.
Require, and I actually agree with that.
I think.
We have. I think it's already in there in a different section.
Yeah, okay.
Can you be sure? I will.
Yeah. I'll be back really, you know, I just have to go here and. It says on, on our page eleven, county, uh, let's see. Other infrastructure damage or derogated during construction or dismantling, the project conditions of roadways and other infrastructures must be documented through the appropriate methods such as videos, photos, and written records to provide a proper reference for restoration. Board of County Commissioners and/or the State Wyoming Department of Transportation may require the applicant to enter into a reasonable road use agreement. So it's already in our current regulations.
Tell me again where that is, please?
It's on page eleven.
Of our current regulations?
Yeah, under K, where it says transportation plan for construction and operation.
I think you just passed it.
It's like, I know, but I went on.
And it's just thermal, pertaining to geothermal.
So thirteen, twenty, seventy, uh, is the part of the permit applications. And it goes through all a bunch of the same stuff. And in there, it does say also, um.
Okay, okay, I'm good. Thanks.
You good?
Yep. Page seventeen.
You good on page seventeen then? Page eighteen?
Yeah.
I need some thoughts on eighteen.
I think that I have this all our original.
And the insert parent company and owners and operators? Okay, just making sure. Okay.
Yeah, that was the one that we commented about, the same Platte County Weden Pest.
Okay. Page nineteen?
Page nineteen, I have a question mark by D there at the top. No, that was, I don't know why it had a question mark. I don't know.
Where is that? D is in Billson?
Yes.
Yeah, at the top of twenty.
I tell you, it happens a lot where they don't work. I'm not, I think commissioners have a lot more things to do than.
I know.
Wondering why turbine thirty-one B isn't turning today.
Why is it their problem? Or why do they need to know?
Yeah.
Even one goes down all the time.
So there's a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe that one urgent factor in this is that it has become kind of normal in a lot of these wind farms for there to be a certain number of ones that are not functioning for an extended period of time and are never removed. Even though you have X percentage of them that are just dead, they don't remove them. So at least that last sentence there about if it's not repairable, it shall be removed according to decommissioning standards, seems like a reasonable thing to do, to ask them to go ahead and take them out of there if they're not going to be functioning.
I think you can leave it. I would agree with you. I think you're going to have a hard time defining repairable. They're going to tell you it's repairable and so, but that's okay. Leave it in there.
So are you keeping the whole, the notification part, or are we getting started? If the WEX tower's not repairable.
Just start there, is what I would say.
If any WEX tower's not functioning as intended.
Yeah, the tower, if the tower's not repairable.
I don't think that the, I don't think the commissioners necessarily need to be part of it.
No, I'm not saying the commissioners should be.
Yeah, okay, so if it's not repairable, it shall be removed.
Right, that's all I'm saying.
So Ian's not going to get a call to go fix it?
No. We have similar things for other things. They go to the county engineer.
Was that you also?
No. It was. I got fired. I was happy. No, I, you do have those, but it comes from the state, like gravel pits and stuff like that, babe. And other things, that's something we never see. I mean, you're right, I don't.
Kinds of things where if there's like major complaints or something that needs to be addressed, do you commissioners like look into this? Otherwise, right?
If you have something, I think if you have something that says if it's not working, if it's not repairable, then you have to replace it, and you have to decommission it. Then you have to have something like this, or else how do you know? So if you want one, then you have to have the other. But even one is not our business. Okay.
Anything else on nineteen?
I don't know.
Did you change commissioner to engineer on that page, in that paragraph?
No.
We didn't.
Left that part out.
We just scratched it out.
Okay. We just left that last sentence in. All right, so.
Anything else on nineteen?
Maybe. I don't know about B and C, but the last part of B. I'll write myself a note to see my notes, but I don't see any of the notes.
Pardon?
I just state that the Industrial Siding Council regulations require that if a wind turbine is not generating for a period of twelve months, it requires them to be taken down.
I do think there's some wisdom on line twenty of setting a timeline when they have to respond to a complaint. Right now, it's just open-ended, just have to respond.
Can I think, if I, I made some of my notes the last couple of days, I was thinking that, yeah, that maybe that had to do with something in the state statutes. About the shit.
In B?
Yes.
The FCC.
Or maybe, um.
Yeah, I think there's a much longer stick that'll fight that one.
I think in, well, I just remember. I just remember, oh, in a.
Well, now I don't know where you're going to go for that, you know, another one. What page is yours?
On ten. Or one twenty. So the way that they typed it on the proposal changed our verbiage. The way it reads in our original regs is, um. Local broadcast of residential television or other communication venues, the owners, operators shall take steps to respond to the complaint as reasonably feasible.
Okay, so how do you want it to read?
So rather than what they put as soon as possible, but not later than thirty days. So.
So do you want to leave the thirty days in?
You know, I don't, um, I'm not any kind of broadcast television. It's no difference to me.
I think there needs to be a time.
Do you think there should be a time term?
It's not saying resolve, it's just saying respond to the complaint.
Respond to the complaint with.
Okay, leave it in there then.
Give it as soon as possible, just put thirty days.
Okay, I know, and then in my notes on the proposal, I also said that it was okay to, um, for them to provide a copy of their response to the Platte County officials. So I think that was something.
Okay, right in there, okay?
Okay. All right, and we, we at the bottom, I think we have taken that out.
Okay, we're going to go to page twenty. Taken out, the.
Take out the top paragraph.
Yeah. Okay.
Everything else on that page, except for just adding in the parent company.
Yep. Page twenty-one. I like K as, as we have it. I like K as, as we have it already. Any and all other federal, state, and local requirements shall comply with the applicable government requirements.
And then.
Think the rest of it kicked out.
We kicked a lot out, yeah.
Yep.
It's all.
Regulated by somebody else. Stand later for next page, I believe. What page are you on?
Twenty-two, no.
May I have a question? On page twenty-one about the airstrip safety, is there sufficient other safeguards for not just, you know, an FAA airport, but these folks who have the small crop vesters on their property and little airstrips and such? Is there anything in there for the farmers of those?
You have to be licensed, you have to be licensed with the FAA to have an airstrip.
Right, but is there anything for the airstrip, the folks that have a private airstrip on their property? Not just an airport? Is there anything in the regs right now?
It says, Federal Aviation Administration, the applicants for the WEX shall comply with all FAA requirements, and then B is local aviation facilities. The applicants shall minimize all applicable concerns and/or potential impacts with existing. I'm not sure what that, what ours actually were saying, existing local, local public or private aviation facilities. Under our current regs, Q, B.
What page?
On the proposal, it's actually on page twenty, I think she wanted to get that one. Page twenty, under B, A and B. So there's all these entities that they need to submit their application to for permission physically.
Is minimize all applicable concerns, isn't that very vague though? I mean, that they could say, oh, we took care of it, and I don't know how we can regulate that ourselves. Isn't that, would that be part of the.
Just real quick, not all private airstrips are not required by the FAA.
No, you can land anywhere.
Registered.
Yeah.
So not all of them are, and there's a couple of them. One that cited, well, the solar installation and the best unit is right off the end of a runway of private strip. Right around three thirteen on Avian Acres. As a retired commercial airline pilot that owns the land, he has a hangar out there with a couple planes in it.
I honestly don't, I think a vague local aviation facilities is better because you can't regulate in general. I, I think you can regulate wholly in general, but pretty well specifically. And so, there is some faith that goes along with these that we're not gonna land something on top of a bunch of batteries. I think it's in both their interest that that doesn't happen, so I think that being vague can, allows us to make a specific agreement or considerations for that if they have concerns. I mean, seriously, I don't know what their concerns would be or are, I haven't been approached by them, but a local aviation facilities allows us to make a specific local requirement for that specific airstrip.
I, I guess what I was getting at is that the FAA won't necessarily.
No, I agree.
Have.
I agree.
Knowledge that those even exist.
I agree, and so I would, I think it's incumbent on the person who runs the, operates the airstrip to bring up any issues they might have, and this B allows us to minimize whatever.
It allows for a recommendation to do it specifically, staying so far away from the airstrip or whatever.
We good? Okay.
So, I think.
There might be another conversation for a setback for an airstrip. You know? You land a plane on somebody else's property, maybe, probably will happen, pretty likely, maybe.
Land over on a highway.
That's what we're talking about here.
Usually they happen on landing and takeoff.
A setback.
Those are the most vulnerable type.
Exactly, yeah. And they're pretty well defined, aren't they?
Yeah. Okay, let's move on. Wait, you on it?
So, are you on twenty-two?
I didn't have anything on twenty-two that needed to stay.
Except for.
Ours.
Current rights, yeah.
Yep. I had the same thing on page twenty-three. Because the preliminary plan which they talk about is already in our current.
Yes. Same way on twenty-four. The state, the statutes that were cited, the eighteen five five oh three and eighteen five five oh four. You can put five oh four in there, but five oh three says that you have to comply with five oh four, so.
So that's.
It doesn't have to be there.
Yeah.
Okay, if it is.
Page twenty-five, I have nothing.
Nothing. I think we decided that last one, twenty-five and most of twenty-six is allowed.
Say that again.
Twenty-five and twenty-six are both pretty much all out.
Okay. Page twenty-seven.
I did have some notes, I'm sorry, Marty. On, which one? Twenty-six, line thirty-two, the twelve mile. That. My notes were that you all thought that there should be broader notification.
Broader notification, yeah, I think that was true, I usually question.
So leave the twelve in and take the one out?
What, and that's the question is how far is.
How far? Is twelve too far?
Give me a number.
Just to review, just to review on that, the twelve is a specific number because of the infrasound. So that, that's why those people, because of all the health side effects, should be notified.
So, with that saying.
That those turbines are coming into the country.
Yeah.
So that they can make plans.
How many turbines?
It's fifty-five miles at night, right? So, we're not going out to the fifty-five, but we should.
For every single turbine? They have to measure twelve miles from every turbine and send a notice to those people?
I would say from the, from the edge, from the property. Twelve miles from the perimeter.
From the.
Seems like a lot.
From the perimeter.
It's from here to El Rancho.
Twelve mile, oh, but not from Chugwater.
No, 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 I was just, just a reference.
I know, that's amazing, isn't it, that infrasound goes that far? It's amazing, yeah. That's the daytime. At night it goes far, about fifty-five.
It can actually go all around the world. Tsunami or something, travels a very long ways.
Okay, so what's your number?
I don't.
So the company has to.
I still don't think.
Yeah.
Kind of what I've been wondering, if we do, I don't know.
Yeah, so this section is the applicant, there's a different section that says the county, but.
The applicant shall provide. The applicant shall provide.
I think twelve's excessive. Kind of half, go six. You live with that?
Can't hear what you're saying.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir, may I ask, I mean, this is just providing writing, notice in writing to these landowners within twelve miles. Okay, we, we send, people send out flyers to the whole county all the time, mailers, 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 you get this in. So how diff, why is it such an issue for them to go out a little further and notify some more landowners? I mean, it's, they're, they're getting billions of dollars, this is a billion dollar operation. Twelve miles of, in our sparsely populated land is not a lot of landowners, it's not a big expense to them, and they they're sending out a form letter, it's not like they're having to do a Dear John letter to every single person. So, you know, it's, it's not like you're requiring something horribly onerous of the, of the company.
I'm listening. I'm not hearing anything.
What is the notification for? Notification of, of what?
Just that they're.
That they're building.
Either way, it's, that is vague.
That they're submitting an application.
Yeah, that they submitted an application, is that, is that pretty well defined there? Um, it could certainly be clarified. What about the timing for the delivery?
Yeah.
Here's a publication that they're notice requirements as well.
What current rights say?
One mile.
An applicant. Shouldn't follow all the requirements of the regulations eighteen oh three and shall include verification that reasonable efforts have been undertaken to provide notice in writing to all landowners within one mile. To the military installation commander. To the military commander designated to the wanted. Location commander, commander designated, federal, state, local departments. Utilizing airspeeds above the white dot and cities towns located within twenty miles. And it goes on to say what those notices shall say. Including the site plan.
I, I hate these ones like J. I, I hate them. Not because of what they say, but how they say, verification that reasonable efforts. Who defines reasonable efforts? Has been undertaken to provide notice, doesn't give you a timeframe, doesn't give you what you're supposed to notice. You know, you could send out a letter with your letterhead on it, the way this reads, you'd probably go, you know, we reasonably tried, and that, and so if it has been in there, she either defined what it is, take out reasonable efforts, and what verification means, there's a lot that goes into what that is asking for. And I don't know what it's actually asking for.
Well, that's what K, L, well, in, in it, corrects, that's what B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, I mean, there's the whole, the whole thing is, everything is supposed to be on this notification. Or this notice.
I think that was written right now, it was very confusing. How do you enforce that? I don't know.
But I don't know, yeah, I don't know about the reasonable efforts part of it, and I don't know about the twelve miles part of it. Because it also says that you have to notify all its districts and cities and towns. And everybody's gonna know about it anyway. But, well, not necessarily, I guess.
What?
I think that, that A or J on this one needs to be clarified, though. I mean, it's like.
How do you want, how do you want to clarify it?
Well, I don't know, like Ian said, we have to make them prove that they sent certified mail to everybody.
If you, if that, that's what we're asking for, verification, it shouldn't say verification, it should say certified mail. Or something like that.
It shall include, they have to provide us with verification that they sent us certified mail.
Yeah. Without that, it's just kinda, you know, it's five lines or something.
Exactly, it's like, oh, we tried.
The issue sometimes with certified mail though is that some people just won't pick it up. But at least you have proof, proof that you sent it.
Right.
Correct.
I mean, that's how the county operates. Certified mail goes out to everybody, we have to notify somebody, seems like a reasonable thing, but I don't know.
So they need to provide verification. Yet they had provided notice in writing to all landowners and these other entities within, how many miles?
I think five's a plenty. That's a lot of country.
From the corner of the whole project.
All the way around. That's a lot, that's a lot of country. Twelve miles is, oh. Crazy.
And that would, well, I guess it depends on the project, I just, you know, it has to be able to include the people that came about five miles. Is it more than five miles from here to here?
Well, I think we opened ourselves up to not just this, but it's twelve mile. Twelve mile, are we gonna have to notify somebody twelve miles from the next gravel pit?
In the feedlot?
I think people, they're gonna know about it anyway.
May I give an example?
Sure.
So, I'm a partner at the Flying X Ranch, therefore I am a part owner there. There is currently now a wind farm located not that far off of our land. I was on the board when that happened. The board never heard, but it was being constructed. It is definitely in our viewship prominently. Not that we would have been the primary ones right up on it, but we didn't even hear it was happening, we just suddenly saw that they were there. So, if it had been twelve miles, we would have at least gotten some kind of notification as the board that, hey, this is being built, this is when public comment, or, or just any kind of notification that it was happening would have been great. I, I can't even look right now, I tried to look on the BEQs and any website, trying to even find the name of that wind farm, and I couldn't even find it. These things are.
Is this the one on the Fetterman Road?
I believe it's out there, yeah.
Look up the Warren Springs.
What is it?
Warren Springs.
Okay, well, thank you, because I didn't even find out what it's, what it's called. This is years late, this is a couple of years after they put it in, so it, it would have been, it would have been relevant for us to have known that it was going in as landowners there.
Couldn't this be one of those special permit things based upon the actual entity like, so right now there's a site plan map. So, it's very obvious what the mileage and area. So, it's very obvious what the mileage and area is, so could you make the miles or the, this verification notification based upon each project?
Wouldn't happen, I mean, I don't think it would happen. We could.
Go ahead. Hang on, Ian.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think you really have to worry about people comparing a gravel pit to a wind farm. I mean, anybody, a year ago, a year ago, I would, before I had researched wind farms, I would have not thought there was much difference except for the physical structure of the thing being built. Uh, but they're vastly different, vastly different. Um, there's just no, they're different on, by every metric. So I don't think you, I don't think you have to worry about having liability.
I think, I think gravel pits have a whole other different, uh, set of consequences.
Yeah, I do too.
Sure. Yeah, just as, yeah, just as bad as wind towers.
Yeah, I agree.
And, and what are we, one mile, I think we're just one mile on all of our projects, probably.
Wait, did you just say gravel pits are a mile?
No, our notification.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry.
Having to do with the, the whole application. I don't know what it is, maybe it's only for the, the landowners.
Just go back one more time on this. This is to protect people who live there already in a community. This isn't jackrabbit country out in the desert. We're talking about a lot of people that would like to know that this is coming in. I mean, even today, when I stop and talk to someone on the street, this is the truth. What do you know about the Chugwater, never heard of it? Even, I don't know how long next era, I know they had their open house. But even people today don't know anything about it, so. And the twelve miles again is absolutely for the, for the infrasound. Those people need to know and be aware so that they can start making plans. And this is, it's only gonna be in the wind, it's not gonna be in, in the special use or anything else. This is strictly for wind. And that's why that twelve is there, okay, as is suggested. In order, I guess, to notify people.
I'm listening.
Why can't you do it in a public publication, just like the county is required to do?
Just do a publication.
Three times.
Because people don't read paper.
They don't read these letters, you know, I, I can't tell you how many of these things I've gotten from the day I'm planning and zoning, where I was in town with my office, where I live. And it just.
Certified.
Throw it away.
Their choice.
That was your choice to do that?
Yeah, you're exactly right.
So if some.
And I considered, it was none of my business what they were doing there. And that's my prerogative also.
Absolutely.
So you're saying it should read something to the fact that, uh, three times in a public notification? I mean, that would be easy for him to prove.
Yeah, notice of the project, I mean, this map and.
I kinda like that idea.
Everybody in the county knows about it.
Notice on the paper.
Three times.
So what if there's landowners on the other side of the county line?
Doesn't matter.
They'd have to do it on the other side of the county line, yeah.
They'd have to do it in both counties.
Yeah, both counties.
If there, if the, uh, landowners on the other side of the county line are within so many miles.
Within one mile of our deal.
Weird. You could go however many miles, 'cause they're gonna.
The.
If it's a county paper or, or county.
But they aren't county papers.
Giants, or.
Ours, ours was.
Army County has one.
Flat County Record Times was a county paper.
Okay.
But I, I don't get, I don't get Goshen's paper, though.
No, but people in Goshen probably do.
But that's what I'm saying.
Even if you ran it in that paper.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
If you put two miles on there, then I'll take it upon myself to send a certified letter to everybody else in the other ten.
I think that's great.
Are you gonna do that for every wind project?
Not everybody's gonna do that, though.
You know, I'm, I'm.
For this particular project, you would.
Yeah, this project is mine.
Whether it's in here.
Honestly, you're, obviously, you're right, you're spot on, because you, you. If people were interested, as many flyers as I've seen around town, they would be here.
I haven't seen any flyers.
They're everywhere.
Yeah.
So.
It's like, I read the paper, I don't go to every business or local post office or anything to read flyers, so.
Let's get a number and move on, it's now nine fifteen.
May I, may I speak to this?
Sure.
I like Ian's idea of the certified letter, over the newspaper, because when next era was coming into Goshen County, we did not get the joint telegram. And see, we weren't aware of it at all, you know, until I did them to the county commissioners many, many times.
Okay.
So I do not like it in the newspaper.
So let's do a certified letter.
I prefer a certified letter.
Let's figure out a range, let's move on.
So verification that certified letters have been provided in notice, have been provided in writing to all of these things, within. Whatever.
Six miles, let's do six, I'm good with that.
I'm with six.
I'm agreeing. When? Thirty days before submitting, or, I mean, almost has to be after you submit your industrial site.
Yeah.
Within thirty days, yeah, after submitting.
Thirty days of industrial signing. Wouldn't it, wouldn't it be contingent on, even if they get their permit to the, I mean, if they don't get their permit, why make them jump through that?
Yeah, that's true.
And you gotta remember, we're just in preliminary plan review.
Right. So, I, I, I would say, I would say that letter needs to go out once the project's been permitted. Obviously.
Once it's been permitted by industrial site.
Say it around me.
Industrial site, IST or whatever this.
Industrial signing.
IST.
It says of the proposed, so it happened before.
No la, no later than thirty days prior to submission of industrial signing?
Say that again.
No later than thirty days than. I'm gonna sort out a timeframe. I mean, that industry would know when they're submitting to industrial signing.
When do they, when do they want to do it?
Particularly, um, the notification letters are sent prior to the open houses, uh, because the notification letters include information about the open houses.
So now we need a date.
Thirty days.
Thirty days of, from what?
The open houses before or after you went to the, the state? Are the open houses after you get permitted or before?
Yeah, they're before.
Oh, my goodness.
Joe?
We gave information to you guys and, and how this project works, and I guess I'm, I'm a little shocked with that question that you don't know.
We didn't get a notification of anything.
We gave you lots of information.
We haven't gotten anything from Nextera, though, I mean, we don't, we're not involved in that community, so we haven't gotten anything from Nextera.
But if, they're probably like, notices.
I haven't.
That, well, the, Glendo is part of the impact communities.
Yes, it is.
And they have had a meeting in Glendo, that doesn't mean that I received the letter, I didn't get any notification about it, I knew nothing about it. I didn't even know about it.
You don't read the paper, though, here.
I didn't get a notice for that meeting until the day of that meeting.
Of the open house?
Is, is when the open house they had in Glendo, I didn't know about it until the day of, and I couldn't make it.
I mean, the open house that they were required to have in Chugwater, you didn't, that was in the paper.
I knew nothing about that.
They, they did advertise in the paper. I don't, I can't remember what you said, did you say you read the paper or don't you?
I do read the paper, but not necessarily on the day it comes out.
Me too, as you've said that before, yes.
If there's a lot of pages, I don't, you know, run it right.
Let's move on, let's, let's stick to, so we can get through this.
Um, I'm, I'm just referencing our state statutes, and I think that we should just leave that as just, that they have to follow, that they have to do by, uh, state statutes five oh three, they have to comply with that, just like it says in that first application, in that first sentence. Do you have a look at that real quick?
Not worry about the, this here?
It's one mile from this, and it's five miles from those, and it's twenty miles from these.
Bonnie, what are you, what are you documenting that you're looking at?
And then, and then that way, we don't have to list all of this stuff, 'cause it's all right there.
What document is that?
This is our original.
This is our original.
Okay.
Okay.
And what page is, are you on in that?
On page, um, well, page one twenty seven in the little number, the, the actual document.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, while they're looking at that, can I make a comment?
Sure.
You, uh, you said that, um, if all these people were interested, why aren't they at these meetings?
I'm not sure.
They are trusting our court with the same way we trust you and our county commissioners.
And it goes on all the way, this page, it has, it's basically the same as ours.
This is what Bonnie's saying, that eighteen five five oh three has the one mile, that this is all.
It's one mile, it's, it's one mile, um, yes, to certain people. It's five miles to certain.
So that's where we go.
Yeah, that's.
So you're saying just leave it as it is, because that's how the state statute's written? Is that what you're saying? Huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, you know, I mean, ours might go a little bit more in depth than the state, 'cause I haven't totally read all of file three.
It says twenty days prior to public hearing. It's got certified mail.
It's the publication for the hearing.
That's for, um. So, yeah, yours is, yours is different than mine, Malcolm.
What do you, this is the statute.
Well, that's what I have to do, it's like a different format. And so, there's, um, let's find it now. Yeah, because what we're working on right now is preliminary, not, isn't it?
Yeah.
Oh, no, this is for the private application, we've already been here all the, the one, or one area. We're on to the next section, where it is the wind, this is the actual application, so we have.
So you're, you're on the bottom of page one twenty seven, correct?
I am, yes.
And that's what, that's what, that's what we have in our credit grades, obviously.
It is. Are you guys on twenty seven?
We are, uh. Let me see what page that is.
On your document, it's page twenty six.
Page twenty six.
Yeah, we're still on this.
On our whole document, it's a different. Hey, sorry.
And I guess I just don't, I don't know that we would need to list. I want that out. If they have the, if it's just us, that we have to comply with five oh three.
So why wouldn't we leave it, it says we have it wrote, or written as it's written?
Well, that's a good question, too.
I'm good with that, what the state rates say.
This first paragraph is different from what the states.
J?
That if we just, um, reboot. Leave that first paragraph to say what eighteen five oh three. Eight.
Consider it, so.
Well, it's just more, um.
I say we just change that number one to five and, and leave it then that way, that gives more coverage of what's going on and. Move on. One to five?
Yep.
You said five miles?
Yep, yes.
It's final answer?
Yep.
I don't know.
Malcolm, where are we?
Twenty six.
Twenty six, which line?
Thirty two.
Okay.
So you now changed to five miles?
Five miles, yes. And actually, it's gonna change to what that said, right?
The J in general is gonna change to what the state statute says.
That you had up on the screen earlier.
Right.
But with, uh, five instead of.
Five oh three, eight.
Right.
One. Changing the left to five. And then all the rest of this is already in our regs.
Twenty seven?
Leave our regs as, as they are.
What, in your, where are you starting at now, again?
I'm on twenty seven, yeah, leaving all of our regs for.
You said ours was already covered.
This is covered on the, um, that one.
This one is already covered.
Oh, right, yeah, well, yeah, that is in our regs. And so, um, this down at the bottom is already covered by, um, industrial site, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And that goes on to twenty eight, that's a whole part of it there.
Yeah, go ahead and send it.
On, on the, the letter N on twenty seven, we sort of got Ian's business of the certified mail in there, just make sure that's there, that knows that. It's changed from publication to certified mail you were talking about. That would be the way to do it, and so.
That's fine.
Just so you notice. Is that okay? That one's okay.
Yep.
So, yeah, I don't think that we actually sent that.
No, we didn't, but, did you get that out?
And then eighteen through twenty nine, you're still.
On what page? Yes. Ours, anything that, yep.
Leaving all of ours.
Yep.
And then striking the new, starting on line thirty seven.
Yep. I'm cleared down to line thirty six on page twenty eight. We're a Wyoming licensed engineer with drainage, I don't think, it'll be drawn however they're gonna draw it.
Agree.
And they might even include a hundred-year storm, I don't know how they'll do it, but. Page twenty-nine. Didn't we address W already, line fourteen? For the private airstrips.
Well, that's in our current rights anyway.
Well, they, they went from five hundred feet.
Oh, just seven nautical.
To seven nautical miles, yeah.
Um, yeah, I just, I really don't have any notes on mine except for striking out this.
Taking, what, uh?
At the bottom, at the end there.
Revert to the guidebook for line nineteen?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I don't know if it needs to be there or not. It's like, you can refer to it if you want.
I don't have the hardware over it.
I don't think it.
Anthony A. is gonna tell us what to do and when to jump and how high.
Okay, and so then there's other areas right up here, you good with all of those?
That's what I had pronounced, so we're good with B, G, and K.
What about I?
I too, I guess, yeah.
That's, oh.
They're gonna have to do that, though, anyway.
Just leave it in there.
They're gonna have to do it whether we put it in there or not.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
So, yeah, back to W then, if you wanna do that.
I guess, A is just gonna take care of all that for us.
Well, they're not gonna necessarily know, that comes from the question, I think, Tom, or, or about the private airstrip, they're not gonna know. I still think five hundred feet's adequate.
I don't have anything else on our airstrip.
You want to leave them or private airstrip?
I think you can leave or private airstrip within five hundred feet of them. I guarantee you that landowner that flies this private plane, he's gonna know in a heartbeat, he already knows.
Yeah.
They're not, they're not idiots.
I hope not. Okay.
We have on C C.
Are, are you have that crossed out?
Yeah, he did.
I had a question on C C about roads. I assume they will rehab all the roads back to natural.
Why?
I don't know, grass?
Kinda like a road, means that, that means be like, you had the windside on you, maybe you wanna keep the roads.
Wouldn't that?
I guess that'd be an owner's discretion.
Wouldn't that be between the landowner and the energy company, that's not a county issue?
Exactly.
So, or that's how I would see it.
Yes, I agree.
I mean, if I'm the private liner, I'm saying leave it, and I already said it, it makes the ranch more accessible.
Well, yeah, but it doesn't even matter, because it's your decision. We don't, we don't regulate two-track roads in the county.
Right.
Exactly.
Or other roads.
Now we're on page.
Thirty?
Thirty. And I, I did read this letter, they, they, they're, they are not planning on putting anything in jug water, so. That's nice.
What do you mean?
I wanna have it here in front of me.
Do you need the, the?
The commission?
The decommissionaire?
Oh, yeah, they're, yeah.
The Curransey landfill, yeah.
Yeah, that's not gonna happen, so.
Did you have Bonnie cross the whole page?
Yeah.
Well, I, um.
I don't have anything on thirty or thirty-one.
I are looking at provisions.
I have J.
Of, so on vegetation, but I don't know. I mean, ours.
There again, I think the land restorations between the landowner and winter company.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's probably all filled out in the lease.
That'd be my guess. Page thirty-one.
So, I'm sorry, what did you say about J?
J?
Uh, the financial insurance? That's where it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
We took it out. We're clear, I'm clear to, line thirty-seven of ours.
On page thirty-one?
Yep.
On my, thirty-one?
Yep.
Yeah, I think this is ours.
And reinstated, all, page thirty-two?
Thirty-two, we're keeping all of that.
Yep.
Our current. At our current regs, I wrote, I wrote that our current regs are okay on page thirty-three.
Okay, for the game of fish and all that?
All of that.
Okay.
Archaeology and historical resource, all of that, all.
And I spoke to the insurance man, the insurance is not an issue, so we can leave it as it is.
Okay.
I'm good till we get down to the bottom, where it talks about setbacks again. I don't know, it's, to me, there again, it's redundant, isn't it?
Um, that's all what our current regulations say.
Yep, well.
Except for with that red stuff there?
Right.
I N B, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's my question.
I don't think we have that in there.
Okay.
Um, there's that typo, though, Malcolm, just in that first sentence on three twenty-eight. Following the provisions of, and it says chapter one, section one dot three-five, which I don't know what it said. My guess is that it should read, following the provisions of chapter thirteen twenty?
Maybe, where are you?
Chapter.
She's on line seventeen of page thirty-four.
Thank you, thanks.
It's just whenever these got typed up, there was just that typo there, and I'm not exactly.
What's it saying, this is thirteen?
It, it's.
One, one, three, five.
It just says one, chapter one, section one dot three-five, which, yeah, it's like that doesn't mean anything, we don't have that.
Oh, you don't feel bad, you couldn't figure that out either?
I, I, I believe it's just supposed to say, oh, yeah, chapter thirteen. Oh. Chapter thirteen dot twenty, because that would be our wind energy. The whole chapter.
Setbacks at the bottom.
So.
We have.
May I ask about cemeteries, because there is one involved in jug waters.
What we're at?
Where, yeah.
It's line twenty-nine, page thirty-four.
I think right here.
So you, I'm good with leaving cemeteries in there.
Yeah, I'm okay with leaving it.
Yeah, I'd say it's pretty important. And I'm good with where we have it at a half mile down below.
Yeah.
Yep.
Just real quick with the aquifers, there is in the, in the application, um, that was sent in to Industrial Siting Council. A letter from DEQ, Wyoming DEQ, specifically talking about the sensitivity of the aquifers in that project. I don't know if you guys can leave that in or not, but, uh, water's super important to all of us up there.
It's also a state asset.
That's right.
We have no. If you wanna talk about water, you better go to the state insurance office.
Yeah, and we're coordinating with DEQ on that subject.
Yeah, DEQ.
Okay, moving on to page thirty-five.
I guess I'm, I've got the, I'm good with our current regulations and all of that.
Okay. Thirty-six. What?
I, just our current rights, I forgot everything that's scratched in there.
Okay, thirty-seven, same way.
And, yeah.
Thirty-eight, thirty-nine, same way.
Yeah, in my books. And forty and forty-one.
Say that again.
And forty and forty-one.
We've already talked about the changes there on lines eighteen through twenty-one.
Uh, what page?
Forty-two. About the, the road agreeing between the county roads and state highways. Forty, forty-three, any, anybody wanna keep that, any of that?
Did you, when you say here?
We've already addressed a lot of those concerns back in the document about the, where it talks about the, uh, commissioners. The road use, the use of county roads or state highways prior to the construction of the facility. Just talks about, and they just changed a few wording that.
So on forty-two would be just our current rights, I know, forty-three.
Say that again.
Forty-two, we're just leaving what our current rights are.
Yep.
And forty-two is scratched, forty, forty-four.
That just touched that road somewhere.
Forty-five, forty-six.
Forty-five, forty-six are both.
That's about.
Okay.
Forty-four is out. Current rights on this, and I just could see on the page forty-seven.
Forty-seven, good.
Say that one more time, buddy.
Our current, current rights are.
Forty-seven.
Thirty-eight, nine, we got, earlier we said no.
Yep.
Fifty, we said no.
Yep.
Now, you passed by fees for application.
We have a fee scheduled in place.
There's a fee scheduled in place, you said?
Yeah.
And you don't think it should be increased for inflation, you know, to cover all this time, but.
It ties to inflation.
These buildings, it's tied to what?
It ties to inflation.
Okay.
Tracks, tracking the question, moving.
What page are you on? Fifty-one, we had, uh.
Fifty-one, we were.
Had a question mark about the insurance.
Yeah, that, I don't think it's an issue.
So the two. Two million and a half?
Yep.
Two million and.
Two million.
What do you think?
Two million, two million for, for Bob. It's, I should.
It was kind of, it's, pretty vague.
It's not look for Bob.
What?
I don't know. Two million is such a pit, you see anymore?
It is.
I know.
For a chopper pilot.
What do you think it needs to be? What do you think it needs to be?
I think. What is the current fee schedule? I don't see it referenced.
The fee schedule, well, it's, it's actually online.
It's a percentage of the budget.
Yeah.
And so I see what it ties to inflation, it's literally.
There it is, we have a minimum, like, per permit.
Yeah.
Up to a certain, yeah, a percentage.
So a certificate is, I think, what Ian was talking about, yes. And then the, the actual permit.
I believe it's a half a percent if the project exceeds a million dollars.
Yes.
So it could be a pretty significant amount of coin.
I was curious.
Just to do the preliminary permit.
Right, well.
Yeah, that's also.
Oh, so. Go back up to the top a little bit, Malcolm.
So in order to do this, it would need two things, one would be specifically here, the, one is a special use permit, the second is a building certificate, because the project is over a million dollars. Those are the two things that would cover a lot of the stuff that is in your guys' proposed changes and the building certificate. And this one, obviously, but, those are the two places that you're gonna cover. And also industrial site.
I won't go tonight.
No, I'm just saying, I think you.
Who addressed that?
Correct, correct.
Okay. I would agree.
So what do you think, Bob, on that? Where it says, special million.
And then industrial site.
For occurrence and to.
I'm not missing anything, those are the two things, and. Plus all of their stuff.
I believe, who, who is that protecting, and who's gonna go after it?
Exactly, that was the, that was the issue.
Probably injured.
That we addressed before, but, again, I'm not really on my own.
So just leave it as we have it.
It's just a bucket.
Yeah. Page fifty-two.
I don't know, leave it at the top, do you want that, on line eleven? I don't believe that the top, you know, like, a million eleven, twelve.
I have that too.
But that was okay to leave in the notice of.
Yeah, where they wrote in the notification of proposed change of power of order. Yeah, I think that needs to be in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, as far as thirteen, twenty-one, ten, I think, that are current, is just fine, I don't know what's up.
Then the last change I have is just the.
Page fifty-three. Is that where you're at?
No, go ahead, what do you have on fifty-three? Nothing, because it should go back to what we just said about our, these on.
Oh, that's part of it, okay.
Yeah, that's what our current rights say.
And then fifty-four, the only thing I would say is, shall have no foreign made components, I, I just took that out.
What? Oh, yeah.
And then this up here, this. What is this noise?
The what?
The noise part of it here.
Oh, yeah, I did, I see that too.
Leave it the way it's read.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so, because.
If a dog is seventy, I know he's.
Dog is eighty and ninety.
Eighty to ninety.
Maybe that needs to be a hundred and forty.
I wanna know the decimal of a bunch of weed products, barley, barley.
I'm sure you can hear him at your house. All right, that gets us through the document for tonight. I think our next. Process. Is set a public hearing for these changes, but it has been brought to our attention that maybe we wanna do a, we don't know yet, maybe a public hearing, because we need to gather a whole lot of information on BES, the batteries. We, we, we know nothing, I mean, other than what you've given us, but we need to, and I don't know what you folks think, I'm gonna ask your opinion. And maybe the board's opinion too, can we do, can we address all three issues in one night if we wait and kind of have a public hearing on all? No?
No way, you got too much to do on BES. It's a broad problem, it involves the state, involves the E Q, the fire marshal, as well as your, your role in permitting.
Okay.
You have the, you have the last phase of that, and there's a lot for BES to get done.
Okay, so what about the solar, solar, yeah, can we do?
Solar, maybe you can.
Um, I personally did not see much on our solar that needs changed, other than.
I didn't either, I read through it.
Updating to any of the statutes that may need updated, that kind of a thing.
I haven't read through it in ten years.
And maybe updating part of our. How much, like we did with Lex, you know.
Good.
So, Marty, I, I suggest, and it's my thought, at our next meeting, we go over this one. The solar. Just like we did tonight. Go through it, and then the next, then we advertise both of them together, and we.
Tie the two together?
Tie the two together and make a recommendation for the commissioners at that time.
Okay.
On wind and solar.
On wind and solar together.
Go ahead.
Are you treating the solar as a special use permit or as own change? Because that is a change of use of the land from agricultural to industrial, there is no cohabitation, no co-use of that, and that's certainly true on BES.
Uh, I might argue with you on the solar.
Yeah, I think you can.
I think that's part of your discussion at the next meeting is.
There's been a lot of. Just even in our neighborhood, solar information going around and cheap gracing under them, and I, I, I think it can be both.
You know, I don't know, Marty. You know, that's a thin zone that comes into only very specific agricultural use. But I don't mean to leave that with you, but other places have in fact noted that there is a zone.
Well, we'll look into that.
And certainly BES is a zone.
Yeah, that's true, that's gonna be the thing.
Are there currently proposed regulations for solar or BES that have been submitted?
Say that again.
To the county. Are there currently proposed, similar to the wind regulations that we've been reviewing, are there similar type regulations for?
We have solar already.
Yeah, we already have some, we haven't.
Okay.
Have you dealt with BES regulations in other parts of the country?
So, it's a, sorry.
Have you, have you dealt with BES regulations in other parts of the country?
Yes.
Malcolm, what'd you say?
The state, so what she's asking is, is there a document like what you've been working through?
Incorporated.
Or solar and BES, it answers.
No, correct.
Regulations.
So, to be clear, at the next meeting, understanding what Bill's saying, they'll go through the current solar regulations. And then wrap wind and solar up as one public hearing. And then begin work on BES.
Correct, we have nothing.
Mr. Miller has submitted.
Yes, we have his information, but that's all we have.
Some starting points, but not line by line changes.
And are there, are there line by line changes on solar?
It's just basic guideline. It's, it's hard to get information on that.
Go ahead.
Um, this is just sort of a general legal question that follows up on, because I truly don't know, so you guys mentioned last time that if. An adjacent landowner who doesn't have a lease with the, the company, has some kind of adverse health reaction, let's say they're debilitated, they can't go to work. So, who's legally responsible for that, is it, is it next era, or is it? Cause they're just following, they're gonna just follow whatever they're told to do, so is that the county then, I mean, I don't, I've never sued anybody, but I'm just wondering, how does that work?
I don't have a clue, I'm not a lawyer.
That's wrong about.
I guarantee you, a good attorney will go after anybody and any company they can find. The list will be long.
I mean, so that basically would be the county and the company then, what you're saying, but I don't.
No, there's a. I think you do a public candidacy in the state of Wyoming.
Right here, you're looking at them, we are to be sued, but in any case, that indemnification clause in there should cover that, if we are not responsible, or did not maliciously force someone, then we're supposed to be held harmless by that clause. You know? That's what indemnification is.
Not mine.
But. Mind your ass, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know either, I just know that there are, you know, my friends who have a baby with a heartbeat, but they're either gonna have to move or something, you know, so.
All right, I think that sums it up. Thank you, I, I truly do mean what I said, none, none of us came into this room tonight to make any, none of us, including you, I know you didn't.
No, I did, I did.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just. Just making you come in, you're not coming in. We're just trying to, trying to get through the process.
No, no, I thought. Would it be helpful for you guys to know how many people that live among us? Our, don't live among us, but that own land among us? So, would you like to know how many absentee landlords are up around us?
I don't, I don't know if that would have been bearing on my decision.
Okay.
That ain't a hell of a lot.
I'm some deep landlord.
Well, what is it, it's free.
I just don't think how.
Six. A hundred acres. And so we go taking away three.